Please stand for the pledge of allegiance.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic which stands one nation, under God, indivisible, infinite, and just as for all.
Good evening. Welcome to the plan board meeting of August fourteenth, two thousand and twenty-five. First on the agenda is Carmel Residential, one nineteen Seminary Hill Road. This is for a public hearing. Zach, I'd appreciate if you could give a little overview of the project before we open it up to the public. There's been a lot of emails and rumors going around, so I think you could help clarify a few things.
Yep, absolutely. So, good evening, Chairman, members of the board. Zach Pearson with Inside Engineering, here in behalf of the applicant Carmel Residential. Since we were last before the board at the opening of the public hearing, there were some public concerns regarding traffic. Since that time, the town's consultant has responded that we've met all the concerns relative to the project.
I'm sorry, not to interrupt you. Can you give a overview, meaning what it was, what it is?
Yeah, so this is a, this is a market rate condo project with thirty-nine units, with access off of Seminary Hill Road, water service connection to the public water, sewer connection to public sewer. Since working with the board for the past nine to twelve months, we've reviewed a number of aspects of the project. Town consultants have reviewed it relative to water and sewer. There's capacity. The original application before the board was for fifty units. You know, in working through comments from staff, we've reduced that from fifty down to thirty-nine. That helped the potential, to mitigate the potential for the visual impact, the original development was further up on top of the hill. It's since been pulled further down. And again, I know there's been some chatter about, you know, whether this is affordable housing or not. This is market rate development. There's been hundreds of pages of documents since the very beginning that have always stated that this is market rate.
Can you define that for us? Market rate, it means everybody's paying?
Whatever the market.
Whatever the market is, between five and seven hundred, depending on.
Correct. That was, that was in the expanded EAF document, yes. Yeah, it's essentially an overview. I mean, that's kind of where we left off with the public was, you know, there were some traffic concerns, and since the town's consultant has now gotten that behind us, so.
Okay, thank you.
Oh, just one other thing. You know, with the market rate and affordable housing, there is provisions in the town code that allow for additional units based on unit count. We've never came in for any of that since the beginning because we've been market rate the entire time.
Got it, yep. Okay, since this is a thank you for that, since this is a public hearing, is there anyone from the public that wishes to be heard on this application? Please come up to state your name and your address, please.
So, my name is Susan Zucker. I live right on Seminary Hill Road. I've lived there for thirty-four years. I'm closer to the Drewville side. There's a lot of problems on our road. At the end of Seminary, where Drewville meets, there was just a car accident. They, they, the engineers, they built this bridge and it's way too high. Us layman people can't see. When we, when we pull out, it's extremely dangerous. Aside from the windiness of the roads, which were never really straightened out, even when Camorta Park was built, that was a promise to the residents of Seminary Hill Road. It was never built. You know, we've lost a lot of greenery. We have lost a lot of wildlife that now resides on our yards because of all the woods being taken away. I just, I was never notified of this project going on, and I live right next to Camorta Park, right on Seminary Hill Road. I should have been notified. You know, I, I'm a nurse. I work at Putnam Hospital. You know, I have, I have to get in and out. I mean, the traffic is overbearing now, okay? It's overbearing. People are speeding. There's no law enforcement on this road. There are people going down to the park that, at night, I hear girls screaming. I mean, it's, it's not, nothing's overseen. And you want to put another thirty-nine condos on, off, right off of Seminary Hill Road with ingress and egress from Seminary Hill Road. I, I mean, I'm opposed to the project. I'm opposed. And so, I, I think they have a long way to go before it's even approved. I mean, I have, I have, I have a, I'm not hooked up to the sewer system. I have well water. I, I've had a lot to, to deal with, with Camorta Park being put in there, with the, the DEP. I mean, I, I just, I'm not ready for more crap. I mean, it's dangerous. It's dangerous. The road, the Seminary Hill Road is a danger. Somebody's gonna get seriously hurt. There was just a car accident at the end of the street where Drewville and, and Seminary meet. They said they were gonna put a light in there. They never did that. What they did is extended the line a little bit further. Doesn't matter because people could care less. Then, the other day, I was walking my dog. Right, I live right next door to Camorta Park. People are speeding. Like, I, you can't, you can't even walk safely. I pay taxes to this town. I've lived here for thirty-four years. I've raised my children here. I've dealt with a lot. I'm not, I don't want, I'm opposed to this whole project. That's, that's it.
Okay. By the way, give Rose a call next week and ask her why you weren't notified.
She's outside the five hundred feet.
I wasn't notified. I have friends that live on Lindy. They were not.
You gotta be within five hundred feet.
It's a five, it's a five hundred foot radius that they notify.
I'm, I live at two forty-two. This is one eighteen.
That's far.
Yeah, there might not be five hundred.
Five hundred feet's not that much in the field.
Just so you know, that, that is the.
Okay. I mean, that would be, it would be considerate. It would be neighborly friendly. I'm just saying, because I, we've had to deal with a lot, and the road is not safe as it is. Please, okay?
Thank you. Anyone else wish to be heard?
Hi, I'm Leslie Klein. I live on Ten Mechanic Street. Since the last meeting, Carl wrote me a letter saying that all his neighbors that he knows think of him highly, and whatever he usually wants to do is for the good of neighborhood. This is not for the good of the neighborhood. Besides the road, I'd like to know how a bus carrying children, because they're not gonna be allowed to stand on Seminary Hill Road because that, that's a death trap, how a bus is gonna go up there without coming back out on Ten Mechanic Street, which Carl has promised that they weren't gonna break through Albano Ridge to get there. It's just, it's, it's dangerous. We have enough condos. We have, I don't care if it's market rate. I don't care if it's low, low angle. I could care less. We have, if you go a five mile radius, we have Stoneley Woods. We have the retreat. We have the villas on Seminary Hill. We have federal housing on the back bottom of Seminary Hill. We have the new ones going up behind the plaza. We have the new ones going up behind the hospital. We have group homes. It's enough. Meanwhile, Mr. Albano, on his private road, has a nice little sign on the bottom of his street sign that says, "Residents and guests only." So, he can be afforded privacy and he can be afforded greenery, but the rest of us could go suck an egg. And I am just sick of it. Sick of it forty-three years. All these condos come in. It's not afforded us a tax break. It has not afforded us anything. Anything but trouble and, and garbage on Seminary Hill is disgusting. It's just enough. Carl, it's enough. Enough. He said that he's had enough and he can't afford the taxes on the property? Donate it back. Make it a park. I don't really care what you do. It's enough. And it's not just me who thinks that. I have a note here from Cindy Katz. She couldn't be here today because she had a medical procedure, but she asked if I could read this. She lives on two seventy-four Seminary, and she just want, oh wait, I gotta see it. Hold on. Can't even get it. She wanted the board to know that, that besides the windiness of the road, it's just inappropriate to put condos in a single residential family neighborhood, and it just doesn't go with the neighborhood. She is totally opposed, and as is her husband Bill, and she wanted the town board to know that. Two seven four Seminary Hill. Two four two Seminary Hill. Ten Mechanic Street. It's just enough. We've never received any breaks at all from all these condos and taxes. Nothing. Done.
I'm sorry, if you want to come back up, you, anyone else wish to be heard? Please come up, state your name.
Yeah, Michael Cisco, Seminary Hill. Quick question. The engineers that deem Seminary safe for additional traffic, were these the same engineers that designed the bridge with line of sight is five feet? And every time you go down, you, I literally take my life in my hands as I creep out. The minute I saw that, I knew there was an issue. Is, so are they the same engineers or were they different?
I don't believe they are. Mike and Rich, my, I don't think.
Not that I know of. That was a county project. That's a different project then.
So, who is gonna remediate that so nobody gets killed? Is that a Carmel thing, or do we have to ping pong over to the county? How does this work?
That's the county.
It's a Putnam County job when they did the bridge.
I, I live on Cherry Hill. I deal with that intersection. I made calls to the town. I sent letters to the town. I encouraged my other neighbors to do the same. It is a disaster and it's an accident waiting to happen. But you need to contact the county and you need to let the county know.
Anybody in particular you could recommend?
The highway department, I would imagine, right?
Yeah.
I mean, that's who I.
Highways and facilities, they're in Patterson.
Sure.
I got, I got a nice little email that said, "We received your message." That's it.
No follow-up. Okay.
Nothing.
Please state your name and address.
Paul Itsla, Nine Mechanic Street. I have questions. I live directly across from where the property's supposed to be. I want to find out what I will actually see when the property is completed. Also, we heard rumors that the entrance will really be on Mechanic Street, not on Seminary Hill. I want to find out if there's any truth to that. Also, that the existing building would be converted, existing buildings on Albano Ridge, if they would be converted to condo property, common property for the condos.
I'll ask Zach to answer those three questions. I believe you already spoke about where the entrance would be.
Yeah. All access to the property will be off of Seminary Hill Road and the two parcel, the two single fam.
And that would not be changed later?
No, we'd have, no, no.
Because a lot of that, we've seen happen before.
If, if anything were to be changed, we'd have to come back to the board again. Correct?
And this will be read into the minutes, so this will be part of the file that says, "Entranceway will be Seminary Hill Road."
Access will be on Seminary Hill Road and the two single-family dwellings with access of Mechanic Street are remaining.
And they would say, "Single-family dwellings."
They are, yes.
And there would not be an entrance on Mechanic Street?
There isn't. There is an entrance on Mechanic Street, but the project entrance for lot three of this project, which is the thirty-nine units, will be up.
So, there would not be connected?
There's an emergency access road connecting the two.
Will there be a fence across that property?
Absolutely.
Guys, you gotta slow down a little. There, there's minutes being taken. You can't do this back and forth.
Yeah.
Okay, the other question is screening.
I'm sorry.
Screening, yes. Is there any screening proposed for the property?
And there's a drawing right there.
Yes, we provide landscape screening.
Can I see the drawing?
You're gonna need to use, I'm sorry.
Anything you say, you guys should keep the mic switched.
You're gonna need to use the microphone and address the board with your questions.
And we've also heard.
You gotta use your microphone.
One would be twenty-three units.
I'm sorry. You need to address the board.
How many units are proposed?
Thirty-nine.
Thirty-nine, because we, some people have the impression it's gonna be twenty-three.
Mr. Itsla, you have to look at the board. Please talk to the board.
So, we've heard different rumors. Some people have said twenty-three, other people have said thirty-nine. So, the correct answer is thirty-nine.
When Zach kicked off the meeting, he explained that the project opened up to fifty units and was reduced.
It started with, the board with fifty units. It's been reduced to thirty-nine. Correct.
Okay.
The access is off of Seminary Road, right here. There is an emergency access through here, which was reviewed by the fire department. They wanted emergency access to Albano Ridge gated.
And where would the gate be?
Please address the board.
Right there. Proposed gate, right there.
And what type of gate would it be?
A locking gate with a knocks box, with a knocks box for the fire department, yes.
So, only the fire department would have keys? And.
Please address the board.
Can you show me where the screening would be?
Proposed screening here. There's proposed screening here. Proposed screening here. Again, this is existing vegetation to remain. Existing vegetation to remain. Existing vegetation to remain.
How many acres of land do you have there roughly?
The total acreage is twenty-three for all three lots. This lot itself is.
How many will you build that on approximately?
Lot three is eighteen point two acres. So, this lot with this development is eighteen acres.
So, it's roughly half the size of the property in general?
A little more than half.
And my other question was as far as the site. I had heard they were gonna do a future balloon test, and I wanted to know if we could be notified for that.
It's the first I'm hearing about a balloon test. I don't know if anyone's had any discussion.
They were performed already, and they're part of the secret documentation that's here. The balloon tests were performed and re-performed because we asked them to do it.
That was a while ago, yeah.
That was in October. We did it leaf on and leaf off.
The photos are in the file, though.
Correct.
You can come look at the file.
So, that's done already. It's not gonna be redone.
Correct. You can look at the file, though, and see. It'll show you where you're standing and where the, the view was from. Okay.
We've been reviewing this project approximately nine months, making what we felt were adjustments for the community.
And what about rock removal?
Yeah, there will be earthwork performed to, you know, develop the site.
I would say typical.
If it's rock removal, it's rock removal. Have to be in accordance with town code.
Would, so would there be blasting involved or?
It's up to the contractor who's gonna build it, but whatever it does has to conform. There's rock on the site, right? So, the rock has to come out.
There is blasting regulations that if there is blasting, they have to follow the.
Correct.
It's very, very intense and tedious to get the blasting permits. They have to go through a lot of steps to do.
I think most people excavate rather than.
They truck it.
Even though it's warm weather, right.
Okay, I think that's it.
I have another question. So, how are they getting the water? Is it gonna be part of the twenty-seven million dollar water treatment plant that's, that we have to refinance, that he's gonna benefit from? Just a question.
They did water studies. I'll, I'll let Zach take you through them, Rich can confirm, but there are water studies. There's enough water in sewer currently to supply this project.
But my question is, for the new water treatment plant that is being imposed on Water District Two, twenty-seven million dollars just on Water District Two, does that benefit this project?
So, so the number of twenty-seven million is being reevaluated. It was a number that was proposed at one point in time. That number is probably gonna be cut in half, so I'd like that, to dispel that rumor of what's going on. It's not being pushed upon you. You have a plant that's aged out, and at one point in time, you will not be able to have water because the plant won't function. So, that being the technical end of what this department, this engineering department does, the answer is, yes, they are in the water district. Yes, they will get water from whatever water treatment plant that is in existence, whether we have the new one in or the existing one. To follow up on the chairman's comment, there is sufficient capacity in water. We did the assessment as part of the secret process for this project. There is sufficient water in the water district to accommodate these thirty-nine condo units.
So, this is a done deal? No matter how many people come here and oppose this project, it's a done deal? Is what you're saying?
I, I, I just talked to you about water. I never said anything about done deals.
The answer to that is, no, it's not.
Okay.
Just like all the people that came out before about the battery energy storage systems or the cellphones, they weren't done deals either, whether.
I don't know. I don't live in Maybach.
So, my point is, we're here to listen. I could have very easily closed the meeting last month, and I said to the audience, "There's only two people here. Summer vacation time. Let's leave the meeting open for others to come talk." So, we're here to listen to the neighbors.
But it's still summer, and there's still a lot of people on vacation, people that I reached out to, who have, who wanna have a say.
And they might have came at the last meeting, or they might, well, they might be on vacation all summer.
Well, to that, to that paper notice, and I could talk to Rose if you want, but I didn't get the notice until four days before that meeting in July. And then I, I called Rose, but I guess Rose was on vacation, so I talked to somebody who was filling in for her, and I asked if other notices were going out for this meeting, and she said, "No, it only goes out once." So, for people who might have missed it in July, unless, like, they read Nextdoor app, or I contacted them personally, or neighbors contacted them, they have no idea that this meeting's going on. So, it's just, it's unfair practice to do that, like, four days before a meeting in the middle of the summer, and other people's opinion of Carl is, "Yeah, he might be a nice guy, but he gets whatever he wants." And I'm not, I'm not just saying that. That is the response that I got from Herman. I got it from Yvonne. I got it from Penny. I got it from a lot of neighbors. And it's not that they don't want to come here and oppose this project, because they do. I walk on Seminary Hill to the bike path from my house, and every time I go, whether it's every day or every other day, I have to jump into the, into the grass to get away from some of these people that speed up this road, not to mention the garbage they throw out their windows.
Is that a town or county road?
Seminary's a town road.
That is disgusting. And it took me three days to clean up a half a mile.
Have these issues been raised by any of the residents to the town board?
About the speeding?
Speeding, garbage.
Oh, yes. Penny calls the police department three times a week. I called Greg Elner about the litter on that road. I, it took me three days to clean up not even five tenths of a mile on one side of the street. And after I did it, the next day, I'm walking down to the bike path, and I might not have as well as done it. And when I called the town, they said that you can, you can come and get the orange garbage bags, but they weren't sending anybody out. So, when the mower comes and the mower comes up and trims the bushes, all that garbage is now a hundred times. And it's disgusting. Nothing is done. It was a nice little neighborhood. It was called the Hilltop, and now it's disgusting. Nobody, I wouldn't move here. I just wouldn't. It's disgusting. You can come and look for yourself. It is disgusting. I'm sure in your neighborhoods, you live on Cherry Hill. Cherry Hill is beautiful. It's in my backyard. That's how Hilltop used to be. Just, it's gross. You have to restate your name.
Susan Zucker, two forty-two Seminary Hill Road. I would like to conclude myself also. I, I, and, and to, to reiterate what Leslie just said, I, I spent what little time that I had canvassing people to try to come out to this meeting, and it's, my kids went to school with Carl's children, okay? I've known the family. It's shameful because when, when the reply is, "Well, he gets whatever he wants anyway, so why even bother?" And when they're opposed to the project, nobody really knows about it. We're all, I live right next to Camorta Park. I'm tired of the garbage also. I'm tired of the screams at night in the park. I'm tired of the traffic. I'm tired. I, I'm gonna, I'm gonna move, okay? And, and here's somebody that really had an appreciation for this, this town, okay? I, I just don't like it anymore. I don't like what is happening. I don't like when I canvass my neighbors and they say, "It's bad enough years ago when I canvassed against Camorta Park. Now I gotta listen to Carl Albano. He gets whatever he wants, and, and it's okay?" It's not okay. It's not okay. It's not okay. So, that's my conclusion. Thank you.
Please come on up, state your name and your address, please.
My name is Peter DeMoe, and I live at sixty Seminary Hill Road. And the amount of traffic since we moved here in nineteen ninety-six, okay, we're newbies basically in the town of Carmel. It's only been since ninety-six. However, in the last ten years, the amount of garbage that has been chucked out by people traveling up and down Seminary Hill Road has gone crazy. And in the last year, my wife and I have been out in the street with brooms trying to sweep up the broken glass, because there's somebody that goes up and down Seminary Hill Road that throws these vodka bottles out the window, and we have two dogs, and we have to walk the dogs, and we go out there and clean up the broken glass. Last week, some, the same guy dumped it right in front of Old Town Road and the entrance to Arms Acres, so somebody came with a street sweeper. I was out weed whacking, and I heard him, the street sweeper going over there to clean up that mess, because there was glass all over the place. So, okay, so what's a little glass and a little garbage? It's not a problem when you, when you pick up people's underwear out of the bushes because somebody threw it out of a car, or, you know, old bags from Wendy's or Burger King, McDonald's, whoever. This is, it's okay. So, we'll clean it up. It's not a problem, except it's getting worse. And why? There's no need for it to be worse. People have to respect one another. If you can't respect one another, it's not a community anymore, okay? The big problem is now, people, this is only thirty mile an hour limit on Seminary Hill Road. That's not very fast. It's not very slow. If you were in New York City at twenty-five, that's a real pain. However, thirty miles an hour, these people are going a lot faster than that, including the trucks that deliver to Arms Acres. Some of, some of the truck drivers are fine, but when you're out there walking your dog and these people are barreling, and they're, you know, this far away from you, really? Come on. It's a two-lane road. Move over a little bit, but there's no common. you, really? Come on. It's a two-lane road. Move over a little bit, but there's no common respect. So I understand 39 units reduced from 50. All right. So that's another 39 families. There's got to be another 39 cars, at least. Well, has anybody actually gone to where this entrance is going to be? That's a really narrow section of Seminary Hill Road, first of all. Second of all, it has no line of sight. You can't see what's coming. Our house is on the straight portion of Seminary Hill Road, and you have to look three times to make sure you're not going to get run over by somebody who's coming up from one end or the other, just to get out of your driveway. So, okay, 39 more units. But, really? Unless something is done to make this more responsible, I don't know how you can allow this to be put forth without really thinking about it. The line of sight, a school bus going up in there, that's going to be a real joke, because these people are going to work in the morning. They fly by our house and go all the way down to the end and try to get onto Drewville Road, right by that infamous new bridge where you can't see if there's a car that's come across from the other direction. And so what are we doing about it?
Well, I'll ask the same question that Anthony asked prior. Have you called the town, or the Highway Department, anybody about all this glass and the garbage?
Yeah, sure. It doesn't do anything.
Okay, thank you.
I mean, okay, so the street sweeper comes by, what, twice a year maybe? Okay, that's fine. And then they clean out the new drains that they put in. That's okay. Also, when they put in the new drainage, which is great, they moved back the grass, so you don't have to jump so far, because there really isn't that much grass to jump into. You're going to run into a telephone pole or something, because they took at least two and a half feet from where the grass used to be and made the street wider. But that section of Seminary Hill Road is still really narrow. Go drive it and take a look.
I have.
Or better yet, walk over there and see if you can, watch out for, wear the safety shoes so that your toes don't get squashed. It's really crazy.
Thank you.
Okay, so maybe the water treatment plant can supply the water, and the sewage plant can take care of the extra waste. Okay, fine. But you can't just put, and the entrance is crazy. If it were in an open area where you could see, this really redone end of Mechanic Street into Seminary Hill Road, it's a little bit better. I'm not sure if it's much better. But the entrance into your proposed project is going to be at least as bad as the old Mechanic Street on the Seminary Hill Road.
Address the board, please. Please, address the board.
Yes. So the old Mechanic Street on the Seminary Hill Road, are you familiar with that?
Yes.
Okay. Well, that was redone, but this new entrance is going to be in just about as bad a situation, actually even worse, because it's narrower and there are curves there. There's no line of sight. Anyway, that's my two cents.
Thank you. Anyone else wish to be heard?
I have one more question. So where Lindy, or Tower, meets the new Willow Pond Lindy, that was closed off too, by two little posts and a chain, and that was never supposed to be open, except for the fire department. Well, guess what? It's wide open. There's not even banisters anymore. It's just wide open. It's part of the road. So my fear is that, I mean, even though that you're not allowed on Carl's property unless you're a resident or a guest, when he has to open it up because the buses can't come back out on Seminary, it's going to be all Mechanic Street. So I want assurances or a guarantee that nothing's ever going to be open between that development and Mechanic Street unless it's a fire. Can you give that assurance?
That's what Zach had presented as part of the minutes. So if any of that had to change, would have to come back in front of this board?
But who's going to be accountable? Like, you might all move on. Who's going to be accountable? You're saying to us, nope, it's not going to be open. The only ones who are going to have access to that is the fire department. They said the same thing to people on Lindy.
If it's opened, and not supposed to be open, call the building department. We'll go out there, and the HOA will have to put it back.
But you're missing my point. The road between Lindy and New Willow, or Little Pond, or whatever it's called, Willow Pond, that was never supposed, and when that development went in, we were all assured that, no, no, it's never going to be open. It's only for fire department access, and that's a lie.
I can check that, but I think that that's incorrect.
It is not incorrect, because they used to have the balusters, like, with a little chain, so that even if you wanted to, you couldn't.
You're correct. And then there was an amendment to the site plan, and that's legally opened.
I'm sorry, what'd you say?
There was an amendment done to that site plan that legally opened that right-of-way.
But was that a-
That was approved by the planning board back then. I know that personally, because I grew up on Lindy. So that was approved by the planning board, so.
But did it go to any of the residents? No. It's just like behind closed doors, no problem. We'll take care of it after the fact.
See, that's an unfair statement. We're here to talk about this project, not Lindy and Willow. If you have an issue with Lindy and Willow, contact the building department tomorrow. We'll research our records and confirm what Joe was saying about that it was redone as an amended site plan. Right now, the project in front of you is this. I understand how you're conflating the two. What happens in the future if that goes away? If it's part of the site plan, and it's supposed to be there and blocked, and if it's not, you contact the building department. They will go out and issue a fine to the homeowners' association to make sure that that gets there.
But what if you do another amendment to the site plan and don't notify any of us? It's kind of the same thing. That's my question to you. Like, if they could do it then, how come they can't do it now? That's just my question.
Again, the amendment to the site plan would go through the same process that this planning board process got through, right? They would have to come. There'd be public hearings. There'd be drawings submitted to us. It doesn't just get done behind closed doors, which is an unfair statement on the grand scheme of things. It is done in the public, and it is done here in front of this board and in front of the people.
So if it came back to this board because the school district says there's no way we can get a bus to turn safely on Seminary Hill because of the curvature on that road and how narrow it is, then would that give the planning board access to Albano Ridge onto Mechanic Street?
This is a private road.
Thank you, Mike.
I understand it's a private road.
They can't go in there.
Buses won't go up there. Buses will, the children will be picked up on the road. I don't know how the buses go right now. Do buses go up Seminary Hill Road at all?
They go up Seminary Hill Road, but there are no children who are allowed to stand on Seminary Hill Road. They have to go to like a-
That's not true.
What's that road on there?
That's not true. They-
You need to use the microphone.
You need to address the board.
They had to go to that street.
Excuse me. You can't have a private conversation. There's people trying to listen on TV.
Okay, sorry.
If you don't use the microphone, no one is going to hear you.
Well, that's my complaint, and that's, I'm opposed to the project.
Anyone else wish to be heard? Comments from the board? Anyone else wish to be heard? Is there a motion to close the public hearing?
I'll make a motion to close the public hearing.
Let me interrupt you. What I'd like to do, though, is I think most of what we heard tonight, we heard at the last meeting. I think we're getting a little repetitive, which was fine. I'll leave the public hearing open for written comments for the next two weeks, to answer the questions about vacations, summer vacations. So, Pat, can we leave the public hearing open for written comments, but close the onsite?
For two weeks.
You're going to close the public hearing, but leave it open for written comments?
Yes.
That's what I'd like to do. If that's okay with every board member here.
I'm fine with that, Mr. Chairman.
I think that-
What is the date for two weeks?
Takes the summer vacation out of it, and I can hear people's comments, but to be honest with you, I don't want to spend another meeting hearing the same. So if people want to write in, that's great, and we'll leave it open for that. So that'd be a six-week comment period.
So I will-
Mr. Chairman, is that Labor Day weekend? Friday, 30th?
I believe it is.
That's right before.
So I'll make an amended motion to close the public hearing, but keep it open for letters or emails.
Written comments.
Written comments, up to and including August 29th, which is a Friday, but then on the following, at the close of business on the 29th, the meeting will be totally closed, and public comments will be totally closed.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye. Can we address a couple of comments?
Yeah, sure.
So what I heard last time and this time about the traffic issues on Seminary Hill Road, there are three things that I keep on hearing: line of sight, speeding, and the narrowness of the road. And I saw that we got a more information from our traffic consultant. Can we specifically address how these issues are going to be handled?
So there are, the driveway location as it currently exists is unacceptable. There have to be improvements made to that intersection to allow it to meet standards, and we have certain standards that are non-negotiable. Site distance standards, there are dimensional requirements. So there are grading, vegetation removal, paving requirements. There are six different mitigation measures that would be necessary in order to improve the site distance to meet those standards and to make it acceptable. Any approval you grant would be subject to the applicant making those improvements to Seminary Hill Road.
And then on speeding, I thought I read in the traffic information, a recommendation for one of those radar detecting signs, it says your speed is.
That's right. So there would be new speeding signage, radar detection, curb warning signage. Signage, it's not fixing the road, but it's identifying and increasing public awareness of the deficiencies.
And is that part of the site plan?
It is.
So they, so the-
Yes, all of that would be the applicant's burden and response and obligation to pay for.
And then on narrowness, I thought I read in this, I assume it's going to be difficult to widen the road, but the suggestion seems to be striping on the road?
So there's two things. So the right-of-way's fixed, so there's no ability to acquire more right-of-way there, but there are improvements to the pavement on the edge of the right-of-way to widen the pavement portion, and then also restriping to clarify lanes and so forth on the right-of-way.
Thank you.
Can I ask one question?
The public hearing's closed. I'm sorry. Write it in.
All of those provisions come to you from your third-party independent traffic consultant?
Right. We've had a couple of traffic studies from, as Pat mentioned, independent review, and that's where those recommendations came from. Zach, anything to add to that?
No, that comports with what we'd received from the traffic consultant.
That traffic study's part of the public record, correct?
It is.
That's an excellent point. You can read, which was my afternoon reading, Ted, you can read that the traffic studies are all accessible.
I just wanted to know if it had anything to do with the DEP and the local-
You can get all the report, everything that we have access to, you can get access to. Any comments from any of the consultants? Anybody else from the board? We know the focus areas, and we'll keep looking at them. Also, by the way, I spoke with Mike Stern, the Highway Department person today, the supervisor, and he asked first to forward it off to him, the latest drawings. So what I said is, after we update from this meeting, then I'll send him that latest set, or I'll send him the latest set. I think that'd be good to have our Highway Department person review and involved. So once the next iteration's, Zach, we'll send it off to him.
Yeah, so I don't know that the plans are going to change. They haven't changed in a little bit.
I think the right-of-way improvements aren't reflected on the plans. So do you need to-
Yeah, there's a narrative that was supposed to-
Turn the narrative into a plan, that plan goes to Highway.
Right.
Because it's in their right-of-way.
Kind of what Pat just read from the traffic report, once that gets part of the documentation, then we'll send that off to, you can ask Rose or-
Yeah, that's fine. Understood.
Okay.
So at this point, we're still waiting on a neg deck, which the public hearing is still open until the end of August. I get that.
Yep.
We're still waiting to go back to the DEP for technical comments. We can't go anywhere until we have a neg deck.
I'd like Mike Stern to weigh in.
Yeah, I get it. And then as far as the, you know, going to the ZBA, again, it doesn't benefit us going there now until we get a neg deck, so if that's-
We have, you know, lots of time spent here.
Yeah, we've been here for a while.
But we've narrowed it. We've narrowed it down. We narrowed down the issues from 50 units to 39, on top of the hillside visibility, bringing it down. The traffic studies showed a fix for the entranceway. We need to keep improving this project.
Fair enough.
Excellent agenda is Verdi Batista, 11-15 Batista Drive.
Hi, Joel. Mike, I believe you had some comments?
I did. Variance ZBA to allow the expansion of the multifamily use. Parking spaces must be permanently improved. Parking spaces one and two are not. They're shown as gravel on your plan. Either correct the plan to show that they're not gravel, or go for the variance. Lot depth and lot width lines. Look like they're in the wrong spot, because you have frontage on the left side about that, and three variances are required at this time.
Rich?
So most of these are just variances that Mike are dealing with? There's no work being done on the site, so it doesn't, we don't have any comments. Engineering Department doesn't have comments on this application, unless there's begun site work being done.
And Pat?
And the same issue, Mr. Chairman. We just need to get this to the zoning board. There's no physical improvements.
Comments from the board? So I went, drove through there the other day, and nice job cleaning up the site.
Thank you.
The only thing I'll say is, it's not really a road through, I mean, it's not easy to drive through there, so I'm concerned with too much traffic, but I guess we're just adding an apartment, correct?
That's it.
It's been there for a while.
Yeah.
Joe inspected it for many years. I just, it came up that it wasn't correct. And that is not a road. It's a driveway going through, so that's the problem.
It's not a town road. It's private. It's basically a driveway, as Mike said.
Yeah, no, it wasn't that.
And as Mike said also, we went to the zoning board and got to use variance to legalize that apartment.
Yeah, I-
But let me just say that according to the new zoning ordinance, things change, so that's why we need free variances. That's why we'd like to get it forwarded to the-
I'm not going to let you go without asking the applicant to dress up the house a little bit, dress up the side yard, the flower boxes. I don't know what, Joel, but just, my view is everything that comes forward to us, I want to make it better. I want every little house, every little business to just look nicer, whatever that means.
Okay.
Right? And there's lots of things. Coat of paint, I'm not saying specifically for that house, window boxes, whatever. So do we have a motion to move to the zoning board?
I may make a motion to deny to the zoning board.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Thank you.
And I'll make that determination once we speak about if they're going to pave it. If not, I'll just add it as the fourth variance. It just, it has to be permanently improved, that's all. It's no big deal. Can you stamp the plan for him?
Yeah.
Yeah, Joel, also?
What was that?
I don't know if I have the stamps in.
Oh, okay.
Joel, you have to give him the plan to stamp it, deny to zoning board.
Oh, I see. I thought you had.
You're new at this. It's okay.
Craig, make sure he gives you the Verdi Batista one and not the one on the other side.
Yes.
Joel's going to give you the old plan. Switcheroo, Craig, watch out.
He just flipped that page. He did a quick flip on the page.
Yeah, that's what I was looking for the name here.
That's right.
Yeah, yeah, yeah.
Joel, two for one. Look at that. Joel, two for one, look at that.
Joel, you don't get to go too far. Next on the agenda is Raymond Hill Cemetery, 165 Route 52, site plan for a garage. Mike?
They're proposing to add 16 by 24, one bay garage to an existing garage. A variances required for front yard, 40 feet required, 13.9 feet are proposed, and 26.1 for variances required. It's in line with the existing garage, they're not deviating, it just happens to be that it's still too close to the property line.
And Rich?
So, my memo has an error in it, that the regulatory purpose would be needed from Highway and D E C Stormwater, no, they don't. All comments have been addressed, and just referral to Carmel Fire Department for that extra garage, so everything's good on my end.
And Pat, I don't believe you had any comments, Joel?
But we had three issues with this, so there was some confu, not confusion, it was unclear if we were grading to accommodate the new garage, there was some retaining, old retaining walls, that's not the case, they're doing it at grade. They are close to the graves, but they're not on the graves, so that's four or five...
Actually, we checked that out, we're at least five feet from the closest one.
Yeah.
And the other thing that you had mentioned, which I discussed with my client, that the buildings will all be sited similar.
So, that's, that was the biggest issue, so that we have continuity between those three buildings, and Joel's agreed to do that, so that's, I think, a significant improvement.
I thought that also was a good improvement. We talked about it, and...
Yeah, we did talk about it last time.
I think I mentioned that we're part of, we run the Architecture Review Board, what was of such, and that was important to us, that the owners agreed to do that.
Okay.
Any questions from the board on this applicant? Do we have a motion to send to the Z B A?
Mr. Chairman, I'll make a motion to deny this to the Zoning Board of Appeals.
I'll second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Joel, thank you, have a nice night.
And happy Laker Day.
Good luck. I like the improvements you're going to make. You, next on the agenda is Yankee Land Development, Bayberry Hill Road, and then Owen Drive, extension of final subdivision, two lots.
Hi, everybody. Mike?
Yeah, I'm sorry, I have no objection to the extension, they are trying to work something out with doing multifamily out there, where it's in discussion, but nothing's been finalized as far as I know.
And Rich?
No objections to granting the 180-day extension of the final subdivision approval for the two lots. There's a bunch of comments that needed to be addressed, but they're going to have to do that when they move forward on the project.
And Pat?
So, the, no objection in theory to this, we've been extending and extending, at some point, we don't want to extend too much. The issue that we're doing now though is, we're extending the two different plans. If you remember, they were before us for the 14-lot plan, they came back and said, no, 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 we're going to do just two lots and do them separately, and now we have two approvals that are being extended, the 14-lot and the two-lot subdivision as well. So, if in fact, we are simply maintaining some level of control to switch to a multifamily project, which I think is the intention, I don't know that you have to keep both of them alive, you just need to keep one of them alive, but again, there's no real issue here, it's sort of a picky un issue, but at some point in time, they should decide, we've got three ideas before you right now, and at some point, you got to figure out what you want to do.
So, we have a final approval and we have a preliminary?
We have a final for the two lots, and we have a preliminary for the 14 lot.
So, to me, the preliminary is preliminary, how many years has that been around?
Yeah, 2020 maybe, four or five years.
Where is the, I, when does the preliminary move into a final? To me, a preliminary should be around for, I don't know, two, three years, or...
Well, so, just to give you some background, we never had a requirement in the code about when you needed to file your final, once you had approval for a preliminary. We had this situation where there'd be many, many months in between, and stuff would change, so, I don't know, 10 years ago, we modified the code to require an applicant to come back within six months of obtaining preliminary approval to file a final approval. So, that's context, and now it's, it's...
So, typically...
Much longer than six months.
Our preliminary would be six-month review, try to finish, close it off within a year? Okay.
Yeah, that's, that's normal practice.
So, can we address one at a time here? All right, Joel, can we just discuss the final?
The two lot.
Two lot, and then come back and discuss the preliminary 14 lot?
You can do two separate resolutions or two separate votes.
Sure.
That's not reasonable to the...
That's kind of what he's asking for.
It's actually two separate...
So, let's stay on the final subdivision, right? That's what we're on anyway, right?
Yeah.
Okay, I just wondered. Okay. Want to update us on what's going on before we...
Well, we're in front of the town board to try to change, you know how they kind of got rid of condos on certain areas, and certain areas they didn't, so we're trying to bring that back to this property. So, we're in front of, and it seems like it's favorable, so that's what we're waiting on, for them to give us the approval, for us to be able to do condos. And at that point, I think we can actually build it and make, and not, and not go broke.
Yeah, yeah.
Playing, in plain English.
Yeah. Okay, so then, do we have a motion to grant final subdivision approval for 180 days?
Make a motion to grant an extension of 180 days for final approval?
I'll second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Now, what you thinking on, give us an overview of the preliminary subdivision?
Well, the preliminary is that 14, I believe it's the 14-lot subdivision.
Yes, correct.
In case this does not fly or something, it's just a, all the work that we put in, and I know it doesn't seem like a lot, but over 20-something years that we've been here doing this, it's hundreds of thousands of dollars that we have spent, and I don't want to lose that because the economy, first of all, didn't work, the houses coming into this property, or not abandoned, but they're not well-kept at all, so to, to actually market this property, and I'm not trying to say that, you know, I'm just saying, it's just, it's a, not a nice area of town.
Yep.
That's all. Not that Carmel's not a bad place, it's a nice place, my own property.
So, as the previous project moves forward, hopefully, this become more clear?
This will become more, because then it'll probably be one piece of property. It won't be subdivided, then it'll probably be one piece of property with all this on it. And that will become more clear as long as we can do that. And Pat could probably speak better than I can.
That's a good point, Mr. Chairman, so if he were to do the multifamily townhouse project, it would be on one lot, so he's got, you just gave him an extension for two lots. If he were to do what he wants to do, he'd have to merge him back to one lot anyway, so just listening to that conversation in real time, it probably makes some sense to give him another extension for the 14 lot, but, but you got to cut it, sooner or later, you got to say no to these.
But we, we are also at the mercy of the town board, too, it's not just...
That's going to drive where we go.
That's going to drive...
That ruling.
Right.
And just the fact that you're at the town board now is a, is a good sign. Okay, do we have a motion to grant the final extension for 180 days?
I'll make a motion to grant the 180-day extension to the preliminary subdivision approval for the 14 lots.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Good luck.
Nice to see everybody.
Last on the agenda tonight is King's Grant Condominium, Fair Street, whatever...
Grand and Propane.
Ah, missed that one. Russian Platinum Propane, 1035 Route 6.
Good evening.
Mike, you had some comments, I believe?
Yeah, the town changed the zoning on this property to residential. However, by local law, they adopted grandfathering for all applications that had approval or have completed seeker prior to the date of adoption, so this is grandfathered. I have no objection to the, whatever, re-grant or the, is it a re-grant or an extension? Reapproval.
And Rich?
No objection to the reapproval, the applicant has to provide a summary of existing permits and expiration dates for the project, they have that and works right now, and they'll get it for the file.
And Pat?
And when this was last before you, it wasn't clear about the grandfathering. Mike explained it to you quite well, so this is illegal, pre-existing, non-conforming use.
So, we need a motion to grant reapproval of final site plan for one year.
I'll make a motion to grant reapproval of the final site plan.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Thank you.
Thank you. Last on the agenda is King's Grant Condominium, Fair Street, waiver of site plan. Mike, I believe you had some comments on this also.
Yeah, did you provide the details of the parking spaces, Adam?
The details of it, we provided dimensions, yeah.
All right, good, I didn't see it on my set, but I believe it.
Yep, right here, 18 by 10, and we have a 24-foot drop-down.
And it has a raised bumper? It has room for the bumper to go up, it could, all right, so that's fine. The gate now includes a locking device, known as a knox box, I don't know if you know what that is, it's a box that holds a key, so they can get in the fire department ambulance, everybody will have a key to that, as long as they put that on, I have no objection to granting the waiver. Will you be replacing that gate that's kind of scraggly, too?
I think if the, if the lock is, can be attached to it, the HOA's preference would be to keep the existing gate, as long as it's secure.
Maybe try to straighten it out a little bit, or try to make it look a little bit better, that's all.
Yeah, okay.
But it's pretty, it's not terrible, it's just, it's not beautiful.
And Mitch?
So, no objection to the waiver of the site plan, there are three things they really need to take a look at, they have tree removal on there, will trees be replanted in lieu of these trees that are being taken down? What are you doing to protect the sanitary sewers during construction, because there is sanitary lines that run right underneath that parking area, it probably should be deep enough, but it should be confirmed, you're not going to be going that deep. And formal responses still required from the fire department, that was something that was in the letter given to us, saying, hey, we're waiting on that, so I don't know if that's come in yet, but it should come...
We, we got it the day after we submitted, so we got it by email.
Provided to Rose for the file, but, you know, that's fine.
Yeah.
So, but no, no objection to the waiver, just meet two out of those three now conditions, because they already have one.
And Pat?
So, Mr. Chairman, this is a little tricky, so these spaces emerged, however, it was not permitted, they've been identified, they're, they've come before you and are asking, please waive the site plan, they've been there for a long time. At the last meeting, Mike raised the question, are they code conforming, do they meet the dimensional requirements? Adam reviewed that, and in fact, they do not, so as in any non-conforming condition, we have, we have a problem, how do you deal with that? Do you go to the zoning board and get relief for the illegally constructed spaces that are undersized? Adam's position is, no, no, we'll just, we'll make them bigger, so there's 675 square feet or something like that of additional asphalt that's required to widen the aisle and, and construct code conforming spaces. Ordinarily, a site plan waiver is something where there isn't new construction, this is nominal construction, it's not a big deal, but it's new construction, so I just want you to be aware of that in your consideration of the waiver. If this came to us without consideration of the waiver, we'd like to build some, we'd like to enlarge our parking space, it probably would have been a site plan application. So, your call on how you deal with it, my opinion is, it's not a big deal, it doesn't affect really anything, but it is, you should be aware, they're building a little bit more of asphalt.
So, Pat, in order, if the site plan is not being amended, how, how do, a year from now, two years from now, have any...
This would be treated a little bit differently, we would, if you chose to grant the waiver, we would approve the waiver for an amended site plan, that would be in Mike's records, so that the file would be clear that the waiver of a site plan includes a modified site plan.
Got it, okay.
And the knox box and all the other stuff.
Yep.
Right, right, it could be all part of the condition.
The board can still have a public hearing with the waiver, because that, there were some folks up there who may be in opposition to, to this.
If I, if I can be heard on that, there, there, I...
Introduce yourself.
Sorry, sure, Pat, Pat knows me, but yeah. David Cooper, partner with law firm, his name is here representing the applicant. We don't, we don't have an issue procedurally with the public hearing, the issue we would have is, is that the scope of the public hearing should be on the 11 parking spaces and not the history of animosity between...
I would agree with that.
Well, sure, we've had experience with this with HOAs, and we often get the homeowner HOA dispute being held in front of the planning board for something that is not relevant to the planning board. And the reason why I raise it is because, you know, the board's scope in this, in this case is really just, are we waiving for these parking spaces? And so, the relevant information that you would get from the public would be whether or not the park, the parking spaces themselves, or some impact, or something which have been there for many years.
I think what Pat is saying is, we, we can, as a board, can tell the audience that we're here to discuss this issue, but when somebody steps up there, you know, we're not, I don't think, at liberty to say, quiet, limit your, you know, comments to this.
We can request that they stay on topic, but it can deviate slightly.
We've had that before in other projects, where, you know, don't start telling me about what's gone on in your condo complex for the 20 years, about your sidewalks, or this or that, if the topic's on something else.
But this would be between the adjacent neighbor, I believe is what you're thinking, correct? The adjacent neighbor and the whole condo is the issue.
Right, and that's the point, so in the, in the example I'm referring to, was people in the HOA, that had a beef with the HOA because they didn't replant a shrub in front of their house or something like that.
Right, that's what, yep.
Mike, you can control it, obviously you can, but you may get 50 people here that want to complain about the truck.
Yeah, I, I agree with what counsel's saying, it's going to be very difficult to reel that in, especially in light of the fact that there'll be folks that want to talk about the locked gate that goes out onto Wainwright, you're going to have people there, you're going to have people who are going to want to talk about the construction project on Fair Street and the traffic issues that that's caused, so it will be difficult, not impossible, but it will be difficult to do a public hearing, given all the other attenuating circumstances surrounding that property.
So, just to point out, Mr. Chairman, you do not, you're not required to have a public hearing on a waiver, so it's your choice if you choose to do it, I think what Joe was saying is, if you do it, you'll hear a lot of other issues and...
But Joe was also suggesting that this warrants...
You know, we've, we've done this in the past where we've waived, we've, we've given a waiver, but yet we've held a public hearing, you know, again, if the board wishes to, to keep with that precedent, the chairman's going to have to do a very good job of reeling in the public comment to this specific aspect, because there are other things that folks want to talk about surrounding that property.
If I could just reiterate a point that I think Pat made, that I just don't want to get lost, is that the net difference in, in asphalt here is like 600 and change square feet, you know, six feet by 10 feet.
Now, but overall, from what was approved, is well over that.
Understood, just want to make sure that the expansion and what we're actually asking for is limited to...
So, explain to us, I've read through this all, I'm sure everyone else did, where are you delinquent in the parking spaces? Six parking spaces, I don't think you had the, I'm not sure if you had the correct depth, I know you didn't have the correct width or length, I don't believe, so explain to us where, plus these parking spaces were put in without any approval?
So, we've got the emergency access here, which is per the original site plan. These spaces here, because of the relative narrowness of the emergency access, they were, when they were put in, they were put in at that, the, the access is about 12 feet, in this most narrow part of the drive aisle here, it's 15, 16 feet, that needs to be expanded out to the 24-foot minimum, and the spaces are, a number of the spaces are dimensionally short in length, they're close on width, but the, the length of them is the primary issue, these ones on the edge are particularly short.
And what's your proposed solution to that?
This is the proposed layout here, so we're keeping the same, more or less the same alignment here, but we're just widening, we're kicking the, the drive aisle out to get the required width on that, and then we're just pushing out the space... the required width on that, and then we're just pushing out the spaces a little bit on either side, to just achieve the length on the parking spaces that we need.
Or within the original development?
It will...
Are you taking space, additional space outside the development?
You see that this hatch here, the additional disturbance associated with doing this comes out about that far, and about to out here.
Reason I'm asking, if it's within the confines of the development, that we could give us some more discussion on public hearing or not, but if it's encroaching outside of the boundaries of the development...
It's not, it's all within.
It's all, it's within, that was my question.
Oh, yeah, it's all...
Yeah, it's all within the, yes.
Yes.
So I have two questions for you, I just wanted to clarify, I wanna hear, the width of the aisle will conform, it'll be twenty-four feet?
Based on this, this proposed plan, yes, so, and there's dimensions on the plan, I've got twenty-four feet here, I've got the parking dimensions that we mentioned earlier, the emergency access is gonna remain at the width that it is, but then here, if you can, I don't know if you can see it from there, we flare out from the twelve or so feet that the emergency access is, to the required twenty-four.
And we really don't want the emergency access being twenty-four.
No, no, no.
It should only be wide enough.
Yeah, that would stay as is.
It's to be used for emergency only, it's not intended for...
No, no, well, the only change to the entrance, as Mike mentioned, is that we're gonna put a lock on that gate and the knox box, but no other physical changes out there.
My other question is this, so the area that you're gonna do this work, is there a buffer, in other words, are there trees, so that neighbors not living at the complex can, won't see it?
You can see our, there's our proposed tree line, so as was mentioned, there would be three trees, I think, that would be removed, one on this side and two on this side, just gonna put it out there, just three invasive species, nothing special trees, but you can see our, our proposed tree line here, so that would be screened on that corner, and this is our proposed tree line on this corner, so you're not, you still have plenty of vegetation there.
Adam, you didn't provide any details for that, the plantings, or what kind of trees there, I don't remember seeing that.
The, what the three trees to be removed are?
No, the proposed tree line, you have a proposed tree line, how many trees, what are they gonna be?
That's existing, existing tree line, correct?
You're nuclear.
Oh, so no nuclear, you're taking trees and not removing.
We've not shown trees to replace those.
When you say proposed, I'm thinking, I thought they were existing tree line, got it.
So, but to, since Rich is speaking, Rich's comments said, will trees be replanted, you're gonna remove three, is there any plan to replant trees?
We haven't shown that in the plan here, I don't think, I don't think the HOA would be opposed to planting a tree or two.
I think it goes a long way, you know, I think you ought to make that part of the plan.
Sure.
How thick is that buffer between the parking area and the...
Make it two, and we'll be done, make it two, plant.
I'm sorry, Mike.
No, you're good. How thick is the buffer between the house, the neighbor's house, property out on Wainwright, and the parking area, about, plus or minus?
I don't have, I don't have it in the, in the survey, I have to look at an aerial.
Oh, okay, you're pointing to trees, I'm sorry, I thought that's...
No, this is, this is our proposed, you know, what the tree line will be after the work is done, I don't have the location of the house on the survey, because it's off property, I could look at an aerial and get you an estimate, but...
And Adam, I mentioned the sewer, I know there's a water line there, too, just make sure that's protected, that hydrant ends right in that, right at that way there.
Yep, so, so we've got, we've got the sewer manhole, that will remain in an island, so that's not gonna be paved over or anything, that will be isolated inside of the curb, and I'm just looking at the elevations, and we've got three or four feet down to the pipe, so for the pavement section, we should have plenty of room.
And Pat just pointed out, there's electrical, there's transformer, there's other utilities in that area, again, you know, call before you dig, make sure that you're protecting all that, right, what's going on, does it go upward or inward, I don't know, right, so, you know, little things like that, the waiver is fine, right, but the protection of those utilities, a couple of trees being planted, just their minor things, but maybe the board just needs to be aware of it.
Sure.
Are you doing any earthwork, or is it already pretty level over there?
It's gonna essentially follow the same grade, this, in this corner, it'll get knocked down just a little bit, but once you put the curb back in, it kinda catches back up to existing grade pretty quickly. We're talking about a couple of feet, nothing substantial, and on this side, we are pushing out a little bit, but again, a couple of feet.
Make sure you make part of the record the replanting that you discussed.
Would that be written into a condition of potential waiver, or, we'll just say plant two trees, or...
Yeah.
Okay. Okay.
One for one, three replacements.
Sorry, three or, three or two?
Go with three, this way, it's one for one, and it's, you know, I'm looking at this project, thinking it's almost the size of a residential project, I personally don't know if we need a public hearing on it, but I want the board members to weigh in here. I'm not, I never weigh public hearings, I always invite public hearings, actually, I extended a previous meeting, I extended it three times, twice with written comments. This is building a little driveway, I mean, it's not, not a big project, Joe, I don't know if you have any comments on that, but, or anyone else, but, anyone from the board?
I agree with you, Mr. Chairman, I think that I'm comfortable with the buffering between where this will be and the neighboring, the adjacent property, I've been out there, I've visualized it, it's not a major project, it's relatively minor, and I think to the points made by our consultants, the reality is that we'd be opening up a mess by having a public hearing, people will be coming in complaining about HOA issues, people may even come in and complain about the work being done nearby, the roadworks, so I think it would be more of a problem than a benefit.
I agree.
That's why I asked the questions, I asked.
Just procedurally, if you were to go forward with the waiver, would it be, would those conditions be written in somewhere, and we would provide those to Mike, or do we need to come back for another meeting?
You wouldn't come back, it would be a vote to allow it, and then we...
And then I'll submit that...
Put everything on the map, and then you'll be good.
To you, okay.
Not to Rose.
Oh, to Rose? Okay.
Any other comments on this, you guys okay with this? Any comments from anyone else? Okay.
Thank you for putting the knox box and the lock, that's important.
So, Mr. Chairman, I'll make a motion to waive the site plan and waive the public hearing for this applicant.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you very much, good to see you.
Rose distributed minutes of July twenty-third, two thousand and twenty-five, has anyone had an opportunity to review them?
Mr. Chairman, I reviewed the minutes, I'm pleased to report, I had no comments, so I propose approving the minutes as submitted.
I'll second.
All in favor?
Aye.
I was held up at work, and I'm sure that the issue has been heard, and it's over.
The meeting's over, but go ahead, since you're here.
Okay. My name is Christine Michael, my family owns property, residential property on Seminary Hill Road, and this is regarding the plan to put...
You need to speak into the mic, we're really taking a lip at you, but...
Mr. Chairman, the public hearing portion of this matter has been closed, the planning board has kept open for the next two weeks, written comment period, so my suggestion would be that you compose whatever it is that you'd like to say with respect to that application, and send it to Rose at the building department, and she will then circulate that among the members of the planning board, but the oral portion of the public hearing has been closed.
And you can also view the public hearing that occurred tonight on video, to see if your comments have already been addressed.
We extended the public hearing for written comments.
All right.
So, send it to Rose, and we'll get, we'll all be distributing copies of it, and if you've just read in, there's all the other comments that we heard verbally tonight.
And you have until August twenty-ninth to submit your written comments.
And, so that is Rose, who?
Rose Trumbetta.
Planning Department.
Planning Department.
And, and her office is where?
Right here, upstairs.
Well, yes, that's what I meant, is I on the second floor?
Yes.
Okay.
If you go onto town's website and click on the planning board, all the information is there, her email is there, her phone number, her name, so you can find it all on the website.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Mr. Chairman, I'll make a motion to adjourn. Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Good night, everybody, thank you.